Carry it, but. The second time I sat down in Hannover Library, they wanted to go half soon, half be presenting, and that was a complete.
Yeah, that's hard. Technology has not been.
Be one thing if they knew what they were doing, but they don't.
It's really hard to keep up.
It is, it really is.
Well, it used to be, I had to buy new cameras every year.
Yeah. Okay, we have one minute to go.
Geez, we're all in here early.
Well, I can't say how early I got here. I was just. We're springing at the last minute. Okay, it is nine o'clock. Are you ready, Dina, or should I wait another minute?
I'm looking for the other trials, but yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so we'll open this meeting of the August twenty-fourth Board of Selectmen. It is nine AM, and as our custom, we will start with public comments. And we have Michael Whitman in the room. I am going to presume that you have a public comment for us.
I have, thank you.
You've got the floor, Michael.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning to you.
I want to say that I'm disappointed by Judy's dismissive email response to my questions about junkyards in Lyme. To say my questions do quote "nothing to further my cause", I think completely misstates the situation. The Hampshire RSA two thirty-six colon one twelve states that licensing and regulating junkyards are the responsibility of each town's government, which is you, our select board. Junkyards are not my cause, they are your legal responsibility. You've also said you cannot discuss the Dorchester Road Junkyard because it is being negotiated. But I think this exclusion may apply only if the negotiation is a legal matter that includes the town attorney.
It is.
I ask again that a discussion of junkyards in Lyme be placed on your next agenda.
There are no, there are no junkyards in Lyme. There are no legal junkyards in Lyme. And we're addressing with our attorneys the ones that you were talking about.
It's true, there are no legal junkyards in Lyme, but there are junkyards by definition that should be licensed.
You can't license them because they're not legal.
Okay.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Would licensing those satisfy you, but because we don't believe they should be licensed, we should think they should be cleaned up?
Okay, thank you.
But it's not easy.
No, it's not. And ultimately, I expect the town will be paying for the cleanup.
And that's a possibility and. Again, the town's gonna have to weigh in on that at the town meeting.
If it goes down the road?
Yeah, it does, yeah. Okay. Do you have more for us?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do. Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to know the the status of the the data that goes into the MS one and the old versus new report.
We will be getting to that this morning.
At ten, I think.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty?
Yes.
Even better.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And do we have? I'm trying to write and speak, which is a mistake. Do we have someone online?
Yeah. They have quite a few people. I don't know if they wish to speak, but we have Jan Williams.
Jan, Ms. Williams, do you wish to speak this morning?
Um, I'm, as at our last meeting, I'm just going to echo what bridges our journey, which is my question as well.
The status of the MS one and the data that goes into it, okay.
The old and new that we would very much like to see, even if it's not final.
I understand. Okay, thank you. And who else?
Eby Quentin.
Ms. Quentin?
Morning.
Good morning.
I am mostly in support here of the community power that I saw was on the agenda. I know that James shared some answers to your questions, and I wanted to make sure that that had migrated all the way into the system and was part of the discussion. Otherwise, I just want to listen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lori Wadsworth.
Ms. Wadsworth?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think I mostly want to listen. I'm interested in your discussion of the events on the common, and especially the, you know, the traffic control. So I, I might want to ask a question later, but for now, I'm just listening.
Okey doke, thank you.
Thank you.
And James, is James the, are you, hi, James, good morning.
Good morning.
And I'm going to guess that you're here to help us with the community power electric aggregation plan.
Yes, I saw that it was on the agenda, so I thought I'd just, you know, stop in and see if I could.
Okay, we will get to that shortly.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, it's Jordan.
Where did the copies, we brought copies down, we're except of just the MS one.
What's the A four?
No, that one's yours. I'll bring it.
Oh, there's another.
Yes, right there.
So should I pass this around, Jordan?
If people want, you guys have them in your.
I was wondering why they were.
Okay, we'll get to that shortly.
Thank you, Jordan.
Yep. Okay. Help yourselves. Okay, do we have anyone else on?
You have, oh, she's gone.
Okay.
Mrs. Little was on there, but I don't know her, Ms. Little.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's see. We have minutes, a manifest, a financial report with the MS five thirty-five. I would like to do two things. I'd like to get to the, we've got people on who are interested in the MS five thirty-five and the MS one, and we have James for the Lyme community. Let's start with the power aggregation and then we'll go to the other. So James can get back to work.
Right, and that one's quick because you're meeting on the fifth.
Right.
Publicly with.
The town's attorney.
With Joe Driscoll, the town's attorney, and Mr., I think his name is Han- Hanson, Thompson, something like that, or Henderson, from the electric aggregation group to answer all kinds of questions.
And so, James, we did get an email from you with some responses to questions that came up at the last meeting, and I don't know if Ben or David, if that generated any more questions that James could answer for us, or David shaking said no.
Oh, my.
Not on your end, okay. I understood the responses and appreciated those very much. Also, Jim, is it Jim Nurse?
Nurse, yeah, Jim Nurse, yeah.
At the meeting gave us some answers, so that was helpful. And so that everyone is aware, our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, September fifth, instead of that Thursday. So at that point, we will have the town's attorney on this matter with us also to help us, so.
That's gonna be a public meeting.
That will be public.
Meeting with who lawyers are non-public, but this will be public.
This will be public.
Yep.
Thank you very much for popping in, and hopefully we will see you next Tuesday, uh, no.
The Tuesday after.
The Tuesday after, the fifth. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I had seen it on here, and I, Dina had communicated that to me. I, and I thought, oh, maybe there was gonna be some discussion today, but apparently not. So, yeah, any questions, let me know, and I'll be there on the fifth, so.
Perfect, thank you. Have a good holiday weekend when it comes up.
You too.
Okay. So, let's now. Move two. Let's just jump right into the water here. The MS five thirty-five and the MS one information, I believe.
Well, you can't start the MS one until Todd gets here about the MS five thirty-five.
Okay, that's right. Todd's coming at nine thirty.
Yes.
So our folks that are interested will be having to hang on for a little bit, but let's do the MS five thirty-five if we don't mind, please, folks.
And the MS five thirty-five, just to make a quick little comment, is prepared by your auditor. It is for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. So after they come and perform their audit, these are the numbers that they have to report to the DRA. So it's really their report, but the DRA requires the board to sign it.
So wonderful.
By the way, we didn't do minutes yet, right?
Right. We'll do that next.
So as you'll notice, like on page two, there's a little section under the fire, because DRA requires them to include any additional funds that were spent out of capital reserve money and other things that are not in our regular operating budget. So the numbers, you know, if you look at our operating budget under the fire, they didn't really spend eighty-three thousand seven hundred and five dollars, so, or whatever, or fifty-one. They didn't really spend that much.
Okay.
So, Dina, I kind of looked through this and, you know, I was just looking for places where our actual expenditures varied significantly from our voted expenditures.
Okay.
Mostly, in those instances, it looked like our actual expenditures were less than our voted expenditures, with the big exception being the highways and streets where we're like two hundred fifty thousand dollars or two hundred eighty thousand dollars over. Can you just, I mean, I don't know, maybe we need the road agent in here to talk to us about that, but I'm curious as to what the, what the source of that variance is. That's the one place where we really missed mark in a bad way.
Well, but you didn't, because the two hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars was the carryforward appropriation that, that you had for a specific project that would have been spent from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, who have been carried over.
So that was probably the River Road North, or was it the starter?
And it was River Road, correct.
Well, it doesn't reflect on this year's.
There would have been, there would have been. There would have been a warrant article that was voted in two thousand twenty-one that wasn't spent, so it was carried over to two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so this overage here in this year would have been preceded by an under amount or a misdebt in the other direction the prior year because we appropriated for something and then didn't.
Right, well, and that's what I was trying to explain, is that the DRA requires all the funds. It doesn't matter whether it comes from a capital reserve fund or not.
Yeah.
To be reported in this. So if you look at our regular bud, operating budget, it's not over budget.
Okay.
So what do we wish to do with it? Do we have more questions, Ben?
No, it's, they're playing with the numbers, and we might as well stick to our numbers.
Dina, is there anything else in here that you, that jumps out at you or that we should be wondering about or thinking about? Is there anything else that seems, look, when you look at this, do you see any other, any other things that, that are worthy of our attention?
I actually had a long conversation with the auditor to review all this, and no, it is all what I can say, true and factual.
I move that we sign it.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, David. All those in favor, say aye.
Ben aye.
You aye.
Judy aye. Okay, the board has approved and will sign.
And this is a public document, Dina?
Yeah.
I believe it is, and I, I gave Mr. Brown a copy.
It goes in the town report.
Okay.
So will you cir, are you circulating a signature copy here?
I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, let's move on to the minutes of August tenth, public and non-public session minutes. What do we wish to do with these minutes? I, I.
I'll move them.
You're concentrating.
Is everybody napping? Okay.
David aye.
Subject to the changes that Dina circulated this morning.
I will, I will second those. Minutes of eight, ten, David and Judy, I did not have a chance to review the changes, but. And David, are you okay?
Well, I can quickly just tell you, all I did was clarify the two numbers that I had added in that were voted from the capital reserve funds.
Yes.
I put what the capital reserve fund was, what department it was, and what it could pay.
Excellent, good suggestion. Okay, oh, thank you. All right, so all those in favor of the minutes of eight, ten, as of noon, did?
David aye.
And Judy aye. Yes, I remember reading the numbers. That, that's probably a very helpful clarification.
I know. I should have caught that earlier, sorry.
Okay, we did have non-public sessions. I'm not sure, I know I did not draft up any minutes. I don't know if you did, so I think they will.
I didn't do any separate ones.
Any separate, they're part of the public ones.
Right, because you didn't vote anything and you didn't.
Okay, so.
Seal anything, so.
Yep, so they're included.
Yep.
All right, that's good. And we have a manifest in the amount of forty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. And I believe this came to us via email, and I did review it, but I make note of anything. David is the one that offered, has no comments.
And I bet.
Ben is looking. You didn't see anything either? Okay, I will move the manifest. We have a second.
All second.
David, thank you. All those in favor?
Go ahead, Judy. Both. This is the one from today. That's the one from a couple meetings.
David aye, Judy aye, Ben?
Ben aye.
Okay, thank you. Forty-eight, eight, two, two, eight, nine, okay. About the manifest, minutes, MS thirty-five. We have land use change tax.
Yep.
For three eighty-three Orford Road, map four oh five, lot fifty-one, in the amount of a hundred and forty.
Wow, that wasn't a good shot.
Okay. And let's see. This is a memo from our cap assessor regarding land use change tax, map four oh five, lot fifty-one. The property has been sold, no longer meets the ten acre minimum requirement. The property was formerly used as, long ago formerly used, as a place to dispose of garbage. It has been declared unbuildable by the planning board upon the subdivision approval. Please be advised, this is not an appraisal of this property or any portion of said property. According to the RSA, the municipality may use, thank you, the equalized assessed value as a basis for the value used to calculate the land use change tax. The assessed value for the aforementioned five-point-one acre site was twelve thousand four hundred dollars. And the twenty-twenty-two equalization ratio was eighty-five percent, which would result in an equalized value of fourteen thousand six hundred dollars, resulting in a hundred and forty-six dollar land use change tax. Thank you, and thanks for attaching the municipality land use change tax bill, which shows how things are broken out, and I believe the tax.
This is just the old dump or?
Just the five-point-one acres that was subdivided off that whole field.
Where is this?
Southwest portion.
Ten, almost in Orford on the left, right before the town line.
So it's on Route ten, not on Orford Road?
Well, that's Orford Road, technically.
Oh, that's right, it's Orfordville Road, the one that.
Yes, it's not that one.
Orford Road.
Yeah.
Before you get to Teller's Farm.
Teller's, oh.
Yeah.
Before you get to the Mill Gardens.
Yeah.
You know where Mill Gardens is?
Yeah, yeah, I know where.
Right before that.
It's on the left.
It's a big open field, which often gets plowed, and in the very back corner, the southwest corner, is this five acre.
It was filled up with town's garbage. It's one inch sitting there.
Okay, wait a minute, the town didn't fill it up. We had, I just want you to say town's good, right? Somebody used to, somebody used to get the town's trash, and that's where they dumped it.
Okay.
So it wasn't a town dump that we, the town chose to do.
I think the town always owned those things, so that's my opinion. You can't separate yourself from your garbage.
And it is, I just wanted to.
So what's happening, doing now, just sitting there decomposing slowly?
Probably leaching into the river and things like that.
Okay.
Well, it was subdivided because of that.
Yes, so.
So that the current property owner can get.
So the property can be used by, right, somebody's gonna farm it and plant stuff and all that kind of stuff, and they didn't want to be responsible for that. Nobody wants to own that piece of property.
There's a number of other town dumps in the, in town. True Scrap Road has one that used to be the dump road, one that drops right down into Hughes Brook.
So, and that there's no, do we have environmental concerns or cleanup responsibilities or?
Not that anybody wants to talk about.
No, no, we do not. We do not own it.
This is one of those legal sticky lickets.
Okay.
Well, you know, the Fairleigh dump used to go right into the river, and that was.
Well, that was the old, old way of getting rid of a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
The river took it away, and it's out of sight, out of mind.
East Stepford Bridge and the North Stepford Bridge, they used to walk over and toss their garbage over.
Okay, so what do we wish to do with this land use change tax?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ben.
All second. Well, we don't, I mean, what are our choices here?
Well, we cannot approve it, but mostly that would be that we think it's too much or too little. But we do have the documentation showing that this is, you know, if that was a buildable lot, had been deemed a buildable lot, there would be a quite heftier, that could change things.
Yeah, you could argue the value, you could, you know, say that that wasn't fair. It's an LLC.
Called Raven. Raven LLC.
Appropriate.
Oh, I thought it was.
Yes, Raven is liability company. That's exactly who you want to hold something like that on.
Wrap them in.
Okay, all those in favor of approving and signing this land use change tax?
Take the money and run.
Say aye.
Ben aye.
David aye.
Judy aye. That's approved.
I have a question.
Hello, you are?
Eby.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, is this dump then part of the negotiations to have things cleaned up in town? Because, I mean, that's the only power you have is to mandate that a landowner clean up an environmental hazard. We used to live across the street, and it's really quite obnoxious that they've been allowed to just sever that five acre parcel without any mandate to clean it up. It's, it's really a hazard. My dogs would get cut, and, you know, any animals that are out there are gonna, you know, it's poisonous.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I can't really answer that directly. As far as personally I'm concerned, I, I just don't know the answer to that question. The planning board has approved this subdivision, and it has declared the lot non-buildable. That's the best that I can tell you at this point.
Yeah, I know from past experience in the legal world that cleaning up things like that can be non-trivial in terms of the amount of money involved.
Right.
Once you, if you get people to start looking at what's there and then you really have to address it, it could be millions and tens of millions or hundreds of millions of dollars to clean up. Sometimes, and.
Yeah.
Properties are worth that, obviously, no matter what, what condition it's in.
Right, properties, this has stated its value at what?
Fourteen six.
Yeah.
That's its development.
Twelve four, twelve thousand four hundred, so, yeah, without developmental potential. So if it lies fallow, maybe. I, I really can't answer that, and I don't think at this point it's our discussion to have, but I agree with you, if it becomes a super fund, it's like the lines.
The town will certainly have to have an interest in spending that kind of money if they want to dig into it.
Okay, thank you. So we've approved the land use change tax. We're coming up on nine twenty-five, so we'll be seeing our assessors shortly. So let's have a wonderful short discussion about how we feel about adding Juneteenth to our federal holiday list. We know how Dina feels.
No, I don't know.
Make a decision, quick. Oh, I don't think I told you my opinion last week.
Oh, I thought you did.
I, I don't think I did publicly. I might have viewed privately.
Okay.
Because I'm an employee, so I don't think that I should be giving my opinion on that because mine is not shared by other, other employees.
Well, the reason it's on our docket is at least one employee inquired as to whether or not we were gonna honor that holiday. So I'm bringing it forward. Some employees think we have enough holidays. Others think it's a federal holiday and we shouldn't be honoring it, so. Do we have any thoughts on that? And anyone listening in who wants to comment, any of the public, I'd be happy to hear from you.
See any hands up?
And there is silence.
Lori Wadsworth has her hand up.
Yes, ma'am.
Does she?
No, okay. Michael?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Thoughts? No?
So I, one of the questions is, do we have a policy on the number of paid holidays?
No, we just have a list of.
A list of holidays, and so.
This would go onto that list.
I don't have a particularly strong feeling either way, but perhaps it would be easier for the town going forward to say, we give X number of paid holidays, and we won't, we truly will be closed on Christmas and New Year's, no kidding. But there may be a staff, so that, I, I don't know if that helps.
That's an interesting suggestion. Immediately comes to my mind, some people work, some people don't work. We don't know if the building's open, we don't know if the building's.
Right, I mean, it's.
But I would love to be able to say, if it's a federal holiday, we take it, but.
Banks and post offices closed?
Yes.
Yes.
It is a federal holiday. Most, or not most, many municipalities are closed. So I don't, I don't even know what the cost would be, one more day of a paid holiday.
Figure it out, but if it is a federal one, you guys already do federal ones.
We do.
I, I move that we do it.
Okay, Ben, thank you.
It wasn't our idea, but, and I don't disagree with, but some of the other ones like Columbus Day may be questionable now.
Well, Columbus Day may drop out at some point. A lot of places don't take Columbus Day.
It wasn't supposed to be an ice guy.
Well, now we're hearing that quite a bit. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? No? I will second it. Okay. Let's vote. All those in favor, Ben aye?
I, I think before I voted on it, I'd like to know what the cost is.
Okay, that's fair, so.
So next meeting, maybe?
Can, will you withdraw your? Can, will you withdraw your motion at this time, and we'll put a motion on the floor at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think that's a great idea.
Well, I just think it's inevitable, so.
Probably.
Yeah, my feelings are, if it is a federal holiday, and this appears to be one that probably should have been honored for quite some time, um.
Do you have any response about that?
Maybe there are other ones I agree with Ben, like Columbus Day, that maybe should follow up the schedule, but let's figure out what the cost is, and see what, uh, we wanna do with that. Next meeting, okay. Sounds good, and have we heard from Todd? Well.
Sorry.
That's okay, I can, I have on the agenda a follow-up on items from the last meeting, we were going to, I had on the agenda talk to the road agent about the use of crushed glass. Interestingly, he's, he is well aware of this, and sometime back with the previous board, which would be now four or five or six years ago, the board discussed the crushed glass concept, um, Hanover does do it, it's mostly larger communities where they collect more glass.
I, I'm completely ignoring this whole thing, maybe you can do a little.
This, this is a way of recycling glass that then gets used as a subsurface for roadways, as opposed to crushed stone, and I don't think, I don't know if it's ever on the top surface or not, it's still blacktop, but it's underneath.
No, it's there.
So it recycles the glass, it's a better, they think, fill, and it gets, you don't use your stone, you're not excavating as much from the quarries.
I haven't seen this stuff, is it just crushed, or is it tumbled or?
It's crushed and I believe it's tumbled, because it has no sharp edges, or so they say, so.
Right.
Right.
Then I'd certainly be in favor of using it.
Well, what's the cost, how does the cost compare to what we would be using?
Well, I don't know that we know that answer, but we do know that lime itself does not have enough to, to process, and we would have to buy processing equipment for.
Could, but could we donate ours to Hanover, let's say?
Well, we could, we could look into doing that, I suppose, although we'd have to check it down again.
They wanna come and get our glass, glass, I'm pretty sure that, and we'd love that.
That would be great, that's a good thing we should maybe check into and see if they would like to take our glass.
They wanna come and call it away.
Seems to me that it is often the case that the town of Lime is willing to spend money to do things that they think are, that, 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 that we believe are to be environmentally responsible.
Right.
Um, but before we vote on something like this, I'd just like to know, are we spending money, are we making money? How, how much are we spending, and, you know, we should.
Yeah, those are real budget questions, um.
We should know the data before we decide if we're gonna do something.
Right, and Scott would need to do some homework on that, I know that when they looked into it the last time, it was not cost effective.
Yeah, we. It was not feasible, cost effective wasn't, so.
Oh, we should check around for other town people, if they wanna make it viable.
Right, right.
Would probably require us to begin separating glass.
We already do.
We.
No, we don't separate glass anymore, no.
No, we don't. It's in the zero sort.
It's, yeah.
We used to, we used to.
We did used to, we did.
We didn't afford glass.
And historically, that was the first thing that the Lime Foundation underruled, was a container for, for glass only.
We did glass and we did cardboard.
Yep.
And then the cardboard would get soggy.
So I think it would be needing a different container. Probably make money off.
Yeah, drop the temple, that glass thing, everybody knew, I'm a twine and everybody else is a tree.
Well, Michael, thank you for that clarification, you're right, we would have to, that would be the first step, and then, so, things to look into, we could touch base with Hanover and see if they'd be interested, but, um, and I agree with David, the town often supports things that cost some money that are environmentally, um, better, but.
Well, it would only be a benefit if they could use the volume of it, so.
Right.
Ken and Kane uses it too, so we can ask both Hanover and Kane.
Okay. And then, I, there were also questions about the apron improvements, and we are still getting some preliminary quotes, and there will be, if we do any aprons, we, this is paving the end of a road as it comes on to, I believe it's Route ten. Um, but, I just bring this up only to let people know, it hasn't slipped through the cracks, we hope to have some sort of an answer mid to late September on that. And, oh, and Todd is here, okay, one more.
Oh, you are, you just disappeared.
One, one more, just one more second, so I can finish up this one thing, is the paving schedule for Goose Pond, given our wonderful weather we've had this summer, things have been put off a little bit, but we expect to have that final paving done mid to late September. So, those are just some follow-ups, and we will now entertain our assessor, Mr. Hayward, welcome.
He was gonna entertain us.
Yes, yes, yes. Wait, wait, Todd, you're not muted, unmuted, you gotta unmute yourself there, buddy.
All right, let's try it again, can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you, good morning.
Well, thank you, thank you, members, chair members of the board, uh, Phil Riker, Todd Hayward, the, the contracted assessor for Lime, and I think we're pretty much, we wanna talk about the MS one today, is, is that pretty much the extent of our, our, uh, conversation, or is there, are there other things?
As far as I know, that's it, the MS one.
Okay. Uh, that's what I was prepared to talk about, so.
Okay.
And, have you had a chance to look at the draft MS one, and I'm looking at page two, which is the summary page?
Okay, we'll pull those up, and we did, I, yeah, we got them a few days ago, so hopefully we have all had a chance to at least look at the summary page, go ahead and walk us through it.
Go for, for, if, if you're not, and for those that may not be familiar with it, this is the, the, uh, basically the summary of assessed valuations for the Department of Revenue, so you can set your tax rate, uh, it's a pretty important piece of the pie, but at, at the top of page two, this is, it goes, it gives you the land values, it breaks them down by current use, conservation, residential, commercial, et cetera, et cetera, and then, and then the buildings follow, and then the utilities follow, and then it lists, you know, exemptions, and then there, there's optional exemptions at the bottom, so that's where your, that's where your elderly's, your, your deaf, disabled, solar, et cetera, et cetera, uh, come into play, and, um, so the, 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 the amount of the exemptions is five point seven, five eight million dollars in assessed value. So your gross valuation was, before exemptions, was four, four hundred and sixteen million, two hundred, excuse me, six hundred and twenty thousand four hundred, minus the, uh, the exemptions, five point seven million roughly, gives you a net valuation of four hundred and ten million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred, and then, um, it removes the utilities, because the utilities don't pay local school tax, so they, they pay the utility tax. So the valuation that you're gonna use to set the school portion is four hundred and six million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred, and I, my notes, it did go down a little bit, but that, that includes the, the, um, that, that includes the, um, the abatements as well, and one thing to consider too is by statute, the utilities need to have the equalization ratio applied every year, so as your values go up, your ratio goes down, so you're gonna get less utility assessment, and the same holds true for, um, for the telecommunications. And so there is, there is that, and, and current use as well, so all the current use property, you know, if your, if current use is, is a hundred dollars an acre, and your, your ratio is eighty percent, that turns into eighty dollars an acre, so, and, and Lime has a, a fair amount of current usage, I'm sure you're aware. So that's pretty much it, in summary, um, I did, I did give the source information if you're interested, but it, it, where we, where we, we pulled the information from was, was out of the, uh, assessing software, and referenced it with the tax collect software to make sure they, the tool, uh, matched up, and, um, and here we are.
Here we are.
Hey, Dina or Todd, is there a way to see this data compared to last year's data?
The individual columns?
Yeah.
Well, we can do a spreadsheet that shows that, sure.
I, I think that would be interesting to see what's changing in.
Or you could take last year's MS one.
Yeah, or just give us the la- last year's MS one, so we can look at them side by side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be, that might be the issue.
The valuation, you know, he's, he's done the total valuation difference on his memo, on his memo that he sent you.
Yeah, yeah.
But the individual ones, we have to have a spreadsheet or, or bold it then to compare.
What do we have for a timeline, Todd, what do we have for a timeline on this one?
September first, it's due.
You could, you could ask for an extension, but that needs to be before certain.
No.
Yeah.
No, extension this year, we want the tax rate out on time.
I see you.
Look at me.
More questions? More questions, do you have a question for Todd? Mr. Brown?
Good morning, Todd, this is Rich Brown.
Hi, miss.
I have a question on the, um, I've always been kind of confused about the land value, um, up at the top of page two, and it lists the number of acres for the various kinds of, uh, properties, um.
Yeah.
Should that add up to all the property in Lime?
It's supposed to.
Okay.
That's, it's acre from the assessing software, I mean, we do, if we find, if we find errors or omissions, we do make changes, you know, as they, as we discover them, but that, that, the intent is for that to be the total acreage in Lime.
Okay, well, well, I was looking at, um, last year's, uh, MS one, and it looks like the total acreage is sixty-two thousand nine hundred one, and this year, I just added it up quickly by hand, and it's sixty-two, six hundred thirty acres, which is about two hundred and thirty-one acres smaller, and, and how.
I, 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 I actually, I'm not seeing that, what, what page are you on?
Okay, so, um, I'm, I'm on the top of page two, and I summed up all the acres for, um, the, the top nine, uh, rows, one A through one I, and in twenty twenty-two, um, I did have, I do have the twenty, twenty-two MS one here. Uh, I sum up to not, sixty-two thousand nine hundred one, and this year, I just did it on my calculator, but I get sixty-two thousand six hundred thirty, which is a difference of two hundred and thirty-one acres, and so, what?
Can I address that, Todd, because I know the answer to it.
Oh, you do know, okay, go ahead.
In the first place, acreage, yes, Todd and I actually talked about this yesterday, drives us nuts that the acreage is even on there, because
Okay.
that is nothing, that's not, what this is about is the values, so they should just, the DRA shouldn't even be worried about the acreage. If you take one H and add it to one I, that's the total.
Yes.
Acreage.
Yes.
Um, in two thousand twenty-two.
Yes.
There was a data entry mistake, that acreage was not correct.
Okay.
If you go to two thousand twenty-two, it was thirty-three thousand nine twenty-one thirty-three.
The, the.
The total acreage in two thousand twenty-two.
Looks like the numbers that are different in terms of acreage, uh, Dina, are the current use land and the residential land, they're very, the residential difference is, is pretty small, but.
Yeah. They, they change because of people, land use change tax, when you take land out, that changes your residential and it changes your current use.
Right.
But yes, there was an error in the total acreage, just the acreage number, not the values, didn't affect the values at all.
Okay. Okay. That's very comforting, and then, and so it should be correct in, um, very similar in, uh, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty and twenty nineteen?
Correct, when you go back, there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Good, thank you, that, uh, I may have other questions, but that's, that's enough for now, thank you.
Good, good, yeah.
Yes, Todd, you wanted to say something.
Well, I was, I was just saying, I think that we, I don't have the spreadsheet, but we, we looked at last year's, uh, spreadsheet, and this year's spreadsheet from the MS one report that's generated by Vision, and I think we, we figured it was about thirty acres was the difference, and that, that made sense, because I know we changed some acreage just for corrections this year, so it, thirty acres would make sense, but, but like De- to Dina's point, it's, it doesn't matter as far as the value goes, and the value, I mean, I guess it's a good, it's a good quality control, but when you're dealing with thirty-five thousand acres, I mean, even a hundred acres, I mean, and, and we also got a, got a new version of the software, and I've found that that, that, that seems to be pulling differently or different than I expected, and, and I'm not a software, uh, developer or expert, so I can't really speak to that, but I, I did, I, I have noticed that, so, but, but the values is, the values is what we're, we're, we're mostly interested in, and, and, and that seems, that seems to match, anyways.
So. So, if one were looking for setting the tax rate, the number that we would be looking at is four hundred and six million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred dollars.
That would be, that would be for the school portion, because that, the utilities aren't included in that, but the others, the, the.
Which, what is the number for setting the town's tax rate then? I guess I'm confused.
Well, we lost Todd.
Okay.
He's, he's, he's.
He's asleep.
He's there, but he's.
He's asleep.
He's stuck.
He's in an ass.
So, if you look up above it, Judy.
Yeah.
Net valuation adjusted, let's see, wait a minute.
Four ten, four ten eight six two.
Yes.
That's the one that we set our taxes on.
Right, and, and then two, right, and then twenty-two is less the utilities, so that's the bottom one, twenty-three K that Todd was talking about, to set without the utilities.
Okay, school portion, town taxes, four ten eight six two, one hundred, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's the one we have to be within the half a percent for the DRA. My nightmare, so I just figured out last year, between last year and this year, it's twenty-three, I lost it now, twenty-three point forty-six acres difference.
Okay.
If you take the correct numbers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What do we wish to do with the MS one?
When do we need to approve or not approve this document?
September first is the deadline that D, the DRA wants it, unless you ask for an extension, when you ask for an extension.
I'll move it.
Well, when, when do we meet, when do we meet next?
Let me explain this.
September fifth.
Right.
So we can't.
Unless we schedule a second meeting.
You can.
Well, one of the reasons I ask is because there's been some public interest in this document.
Yeah.
And we just now distributed it.
Right.
Um, this seems fine to me, and I'm happy to vote to approve it and sign it, but, uh, if we have people who are interested in this and wanna look at it, you know.
Well, they can certainly discuss it at our next meeting.
And they can look at it, but it's not gonna change.
Well, they, they might change, if somebody looked at this and found an error, or, or, uh, you know, I mean, you, you don't know.
I'd like to hear what Dina says about extensions.
Oh, God.
Um, what happens with, is when you send in your MS one, you get put in a queue, and it's first come, first served. So, if you wait until after September first, and all, you know, however many other towns, it just puts you farther behind, so it makes your tax rate come later, last year, it took forever.
Yes, it did, it was very.
And the DRA is behind, and the DRA doesn't have enough workers, and the DRA doesn't, you know, um, I think the longer we borrow on our tan because we don't sign the MS one.
I'm having a suggestion.
More money.
Yeah, yeah, so let me ask another question, if we approve this and sign it, and subsequently discover a mistake or an error, do we, is there any ability to, uh, file an amended MS one?
If you found a significant error that was gonna make a difference in the tax rate, I, I can call the DRA and we could figure things out, absolutely.
Or, how about this, the people that are interested, most interested are either in the room or on the phone. If we agree to continue this meeting until tomorrow morning, come in and finish the discussion, if they had the wherewithal to actually, I know Rich will do this, so, do it tonight, and if. And if they find an error, then we can have that discussion tomorrow.
I'm happy with that. I, I just, it seems to me that, from a good government perspective, if you're distributing a document, it's, it's, it's
It's very.
Nice to give people at, at least a little bit of time to be able to review it and comment on it before we vote on it.
Yep.
I'm, I don't think I'm going to have anything. I'm not going to dig into this.
I looked at some of the attached materials that we were sent yesterday, I guess, and read them, but, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to have someone with some expertise who has delved into all these little nooks and crannies.
So either of those solutions is fine with me. I'm happy to vote on it and with the understanding that if we subsequently discover a problem, we'll figure out a way to go back to the.
Sure, absolutely.
DRA and work it out.
I think we should do that because, you know, we voted on these other years and, uh, problems haven't materialized. And the tax rate is more important, getting it done.
Tax rate, getting it done, getting it early.
It costs the town money to borrow on that.
It costs the town money, and it also helps people know what their tax bill is earlier and be able to pay it. Would you be comfortable with that?
That would be very gracious, and I also wanted to say, Mr. Haywood is back.
Yeah, I was going to tell you he's back, but I would like to say that it's, it's much like the MS five thirty-five that you guys just approved and signed. Your auditor did it. They went over the numbers. They did all their job. That's what your assessor's doing. And Jordan and I did check. It doesn't mean there's an own mistake, I know that, but, and if we find one, then we can correct it.
I'll go back to moving it.
I'll second on that basis.
Okay. So you're willing to do, to do it today and approve it or not approve it today?
And we should put it on the agenda for September fifth, and if people have comments or, or, or questions or stuff, then we'll look at it.
We'll have a discussion, and then we do, we'll contact DRA.
We'll go back to the DRA and do what we need to do to get.
And then give you two weeks.
And I hope if, I hope if somebody finds an error, they don't wait until September fifth. I hope they call me ASAP.
Okay, all those in favor of signing the MS one? Ben said aye.
David aye.
David aye, Judy aye. Okay, we've approved it and we will sign it, and we will have a discussion on the fifth. People are willing, if they find errors, to hopefully contact Dina and be a part of that discussion.
Wow, oh, twenty percent?
Todd, do you have anything else for us?
You're muted. You're muted. We can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. It, my phone was on my, it was in my car and, you know, overheated, so I apologize about that. So now I'm, I'm good. If you're, if you're good, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. And we thank you for getting this to us in a nice, timely fashion, and the letter you wrote, and being here to explain it and take questions. And, uh, we have voted to approve it and sign it with the stipulation that it will be on our agenda September fifth if we find some errors or people have questions or just comments.
Yeah, do you have anything to tell us about that, Todd? If, if we approve this and sign it and then subsequently an error or a problem is identified, i- is there the ability to go back to the DRA and work that out?
Yeah, you can amend it.
Okay.
You can amend it. You, you can amend it up till the day of your tax rate setting.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, well, we thank you for taking the time to be with us. Have a good day.
Okay. Good, good to see you.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Yes, ma'am?
You guys email these, um, documents to us?
We'll put it right on the website.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and to follow up with that, will you put on, um, the, the letter that Todd sent along explaining it?
Yeah.
That's up to you guys. You left the memo on there.
Yeah. Sure.
That would be fabulous. Thank you. In case anybody really has trouble sleeping.
Okay. All right. By the way, it's delightful to have Jordan sort of in the wings.
Oh, my God, it's great. She's listening and zips in whatever we need.
Thank you, Jordan.
Did we vote or?
Uh, we did.
I thought you did.
Oh, yes.
I wrote yes.
I wrote approve and sign.
David aye.
Yes, you did. And Ben did several times. I have something right now to bring up that's not on the agenda, but as I was walking in, our police chief handed me a quote. One of the things that he has been concerned with, and I think, uh, others of us who volunteer in the town and are out and about have thought about and talked about intermittently for a few years, is identification of badges for staff and for volunteers. And he has a quote on an Alpha Card machine that will make, it's an ID printer, ID card printer. And so anyone, uh, shows up maybe at an accident, state police are there, someone is helping drag traffic or do something else. Well, who are you and why are you here? You can say, I'm Judy Brotman and I'm on the select board. I actually have had instances in the past where people challenged who I was when I was even just trying to be helpful in some instances. And, uh, so, I don't know how this board feels about this, um, but this quote is for four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. There is money in his budget that will cover this because we have some, I mean, we have some, uh, payroll that because our officer is no longer with us, that our chief felt he had money that he could buy us. If not, it will probably be in his budget presentation for next year, because he does feel pretty strongly in the firefighters and the, um, first responders, et cetera. So, David, how do you feel about this?
Can mine say, "Your Excellency"?
Yes. I can't remember the proper term for a select board member, but it is rising to that level. It's very funny. That one of the executive counselors from past times, whose name is presently escaping me, used to always stop and visit every select board in his jurisdiction, and he always used this very sort of term, "Like, Your Excellency." Uh, it was very funny.
Gray, was it Gray Burton?
Ray Burton. Thank you. That's who it was. Yes. The honorable. I think we're honorable, but I'm not sure.
Oh, wait, Sean, Sean told me that the new radar signs are going up today.
I saw them working on them. I was going to say something, and then I thought I better not, because what if they don't, if they get a glitch? But Steve Michael reminded me, the goal is to have them up before school. They're bigger. We'll see.
Good.
It'll be nice. So, should we, uh?
I move it.
I just think he better make sure he has that money in his budget.
Well, of course he did. He's the police chief, and he's your brother-in-law.
Yeah. That makes absolutely no difference, but I, yeah.
Um, how about a conditional approval?
There you go.
Yeah, and I don't know that we need to, do we need to vote on it? I think we can just say yes, coming out of his budget if he makes sure it's.
Let's vote on it anyway. Why get in trouble for something?
All right. So Ben, you're moving it.
I'll second.
And David a second. And all those in favor?
Yeah.
David aye.
Judy aye, conditional on making sure that he has the budget money for the Alpha Card.
So how's it work? Is it, is there like a photograph that has to be included on it? Is it?
Yeah, you get a picture taken. We, we, a bunch of us, older or more seasoned employees have them already. It's like a little credit card.
I wonder if it counts as a state issue photo ID, airport and stuff.
Um, I don't know. Probably not, because it doesn't have to do with.
Would it be for people on the town payroll?
These would be, yeah, employees and volunteers.
Well, he can make specific ones. He can make different ones for volunteers. They can't use them as a, as a municipal employee, you know, but.
Like the firefighters, the first squad. I'm not sure, maybe.
Well, I think I'm a school.
Yeah, if you're a school volunteer.
We're qualified to help small children across the road.
There you go. So, so get your lanyard ready and. Okay.
Yeah, he can make a deal with the school.
Yeah, they should, they should.
Well, the school has IDs. I don't know why you guys wouldn't have them.
I don't.
Yeah.
You should ask the school. They get them. They have them.
Right.
If not, we should certainly get them for you, because that, you need a, should anyone question your authority.
Yeah, if you're, if you're having to give direction to the public and then somebody says, "Who are you?" and then you up to it.
They might think you're just throwing on a vest for the fun of it, also, I don't know.
It's seven thirty in the morning, sure. In January. Great this time of year.
Correct.
You know, something I've been wondering about was at, at one of our prior meetings, I think it was Sean, or somebody told us that, you know, there's those flashing yellow lights at the school. They're supposed to go up to lower the speed limit when school is coming into session or, or, or just being dismissed. And they haven't worked for a couple of years. They flash randomly.
That's the school's responsibility. John is on that.
And, and somebody told me that, that, that there's a lock box where there's a control and they have lost the key to the box.
They toss that now, though.
Yeah, John, the principal says it, they are, um, the school responsibility and they are working. And it was on this morning when I came in court.
Fantastic, yep.
But, you know, it's, we, we approved and wanted foundation to put up the money for one of those crossing lights. And there was a big kerfuffle about it, as always. But they really work. I mean, you go to Hanover now and there everywhere, so they're not such a scary thing as they might have been the first time, but.
Well, we should.
And I think the platform was even put in.
Oh, the platform's there, everything underground for.
The electronics.
The electronics is there and ready to go when it finally gets approved, if it ever does.
At the time, there was, uh, an issue with it.
It was.
Right, with a health issue.
Yes.
So, um.
But they're really innocuous, I mean.
Well, they're really effective, I think.
They are very effective.
Yes.
Yeah, they're effective, and that's, I mean, I was literally running into them everywhere now.
The one proviso is because this particular light will be on a state road, the state approves the light. So if you're at.
Well, it has to be one of those types of lights, because they approved all those.
Well, in Hanover, there are several different kinds, but in Hanover, that's in the urban compact of Hanover, so the state had no say in what they are.
Oh, they're still very similar.
Yeah, but they've already, they've already approved it. The state asked, no specific kind.
They are similar. Yes, a specific kind. So we should revisit that issue, because I think they would be just such a help.
They're only used when somebody needs one, and that's the beauty of them. They're not flashing there all day long. And somebody pokes a button and says, "I want to cross the road."
Well, we should do that.
What was the? I'm not sure what. Somebody who lived right, right in front of it didn't like the idea of having a bright flashing light?
Well, they're a child, they're a child.
Child with a medical issue that would.
No, I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't think so, no.
Potentially a factor.
Potentially. And they're not there anymore.
Right.
The parents not there?
Yes, they are.
The parents are there, the child isn't.
Well, okay.
Well.
I don't think we can say that, so yes, that's right.
Oh, okay, well, anyway.
We don't know, but it would be good to revisit it if, in fact, it could be approved.
Does anyone know the parent who objected?
Yep.
Yes.
I wonder if it would be, uh, the better part of valor to reach out individually and just say, "Are you feeling better about this if we reapproach it now before we dive in?"
That would be the courteous thing to do, yes.
Can you do that, Dina?
Yep.
I talked, oh, gosh, I think it was the manufacturer, and they said they have been proven to not stimulate a, an adverse reaction, physical reaction, so. You know.
Yeah, the other side of it is Sean would sit there with his lights flashing and with the same type of stroke.
Well.
I don't know what the, the, the whole, that, the medical reaction might have been a pretext. Maybe somebody who lives there doesn't like the idea of having a very bright LED flashing through their curtains periodically during the day and finds that objectionable. And, you know, frankly, if I lived in front of a sign like that, that might bother me too. I, you know, you, you, it might be very visible, so.
Well, on the other side of things, I live downtown, and you, you turn off all objectionable noises in your brain. They just disappear.
Yeah.
Lots of, lots of discussion went into this at the time, and I do think it's worth revisiting, and I think it would be great if Dina reached out initially before anything, but.
Well, certainly there's enough experience with them in the Upper Valley.
Yes, there is, yeah.
They'll know what we're talking about, just moments ago.
Right.
Yeah. Do we have the CCL's use of common applications for signature?
Yes, they're in here, and, um, yeah, you don't need to vote on them again. You're just.
We're going to approve them.
You're just going to sign them.
Okay.
Because you, I thought you already approved them at the last meeting.
Tentative to our.
That you were going to try that parking thing.
We're going to try the parking thing, and that's, I just wanted to give that update, because we met on the Monday following the meeting with CCL and you and me and Jordan and worked out some of those issues, but we, and Sean was there, and he did walk through, the use, the proposed use of the back of the common road for limited event parking and one-way travel during these two weekend events, uh, that the CCL is putting on. One is of a PONs. I can't think of the name.
Taco Dinner or fundraiser.
Taco Dinner, yeah. And then the other is the health, uh.
Fair. Just trying to help. The health fair.
Brain is not.
I'm looking at it. Health and wellness fair.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So, we will see something different going on in the back, on the road, the back of the common during those two events. There'll be one lane of travel, one way, and there will be parking in the other lane limited for the event. So that can belong to.
And you can, um, you can approve it, and Jordan can sign it, or you guys can all sign it. So it's up to you. It says select board rep, because we usually sign them, but if it's something that comes to you guys.
Oh, that's, that's fine. I'm happy to.
Okay.
We can.
Just, just.
We'll let her sign it?
Yeah.
We'll let Jordan sign it. So, um.
Then we can change your letter up.
And we can change what?
Her letter.
To sign her? Yes. Okay. Give her some more authority.
Yay. So we are letting Jordan sign that. That'd be great. Okay. I'm going down my little list. I'm going down this list.
It's just nice to have things to say. It's great, great, great.
We are going to begin budget discussions, which is everybody's favorite thing to do. I don't think we need to delve into it too deeply. We will start really in earnest September fifth, but as near as I can tell, this year's COLA and CPI are shaken out about three percent. I don't have any definite numbers. It's fluctuated a little. Anyone, what we usually do, the first thing we do is run the payroll with a projected percentage, but Rich knows, or David knows, or somebody knows. Have you heard any numbers?
No, I have not.
Okay. I, I went online and they were talking about three, three point one, three point two, and then like a week later, it was sort of still fluctuating in that general range. But, you know, if we can keep an eye on that for our September fifth meeting, have a.
Yeah.
A projection.
Okay. I will do a little. Yep.
Dina and I have agreed that we need to get going on the budget earlier this year so that we can really be in better shape when we meet with the budget committee and not do a lot of last minute.
I'm too old to have the additional stress.
Hey, guys, one thing I didn't see on the agenda, maybe I'm missing it, but that we did get in the materials Dina circulated is the stuff about the covered bridge.
Oh.
Yeah, that was kind of an FYI. I wasn't sure if you were ready to talk.
We should talk about that.
We should talk about it. Is that something that needs to be done?
All right, so I'll do the three percent.
Yeah, unless we see something different. Okay.
Well, I have good news.
Next meeting. Okay, let's talk about the covered bridge, the Edel covered bridge.
Yes.
I had a great, great thought last night. I thought we could do, like I've seen other towns do, move the bridge. I had a great, great thought last night. I thought we could do like I've seen other towns do, move the bridge. We could take it over to the Chaffey Wildlife Center and it could be the bridge that goes over the rock.
Nice thought, Judy.
People can walk through it. We could still use it. It wouldn't need to be fixed to support heavy vehicles. And then we could put a modern bridge across the road, the river. I had a hard night sleeping last night.
You're the only one laughing. That's right.
Okay, never mind. Want to tell us about the quote?
Okay, well, um, Mr. Stan Grattan is the gentleman who looked at this. He's done, he does historical restorations of covered bridges and barns and timber frames. He took the state's report from two thousand twenty that they had done for us and then went and met with Scott and looked at it and went over everything. And so now granted, this is just a budget estimate. It's not a bid or anything. But it came in at an, at an estimate uh, for six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. But it needs a lot of work. It's, it's really, um.
I, I was at that meeting some.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I forgot you were here.
Basically, there's, you'll see concrete pillars in, in culverts out in the water on both sides. And if you go there, there's, um, one side's completely slack and falling off and the other side's tight to the point where if it snapped, the whole bridge would flip over. And it's, um, it's lost its structural balance. And they put those in, that was the state's effort, and they're just pillars sunk in mud. They're not really, but you can tell by, anybody can drive there and look at the cables on one side and the next and then take an eye sight down the bridge and you see it's going like this. The structure of the bridge itself should be enough to hold it in place. And that was done, excuse the expression, half-assed when it was done last. And it's a matter of redoing it, so it's actually structurally sound, ready and self-supporting.
Yeah, this, Ben, he said that the, um, complete deck needs to be removed. The roof needs to be removed.
They have to do that.
They have to do an alignment of it because the whole, the bridge is swaying. So anyways, this, this is why it's so expensive.
Well, we should talk about what, what we have have for money and we should also talk about this is something that could certainly get some community involvement in.
Right, well, I've done a little homework. So right now. So right now in the capital reserve fund, bridge capital reserve fund, we have four hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Then, um, we got a one-time special, a special one-time payment from the state for a municipal bridge repair of sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. That just came last year. So that's sitting there. So that's four hundred and eighty-six oh seven. And then we have fifty thousand that's going into the fund this year.
Family, but we got other bridge problems too.
Well, we have a lot. We, we have that bridge report and it addresses five bridges and two out of the five are serious. So the one thing that I thought would be, um, beneficial for this, because it is a historic bridge, is there's the Historic Bridge Foundation. Um, I haven't been able to actually speak to anybody yet, but, um, I have a message to them. Um, they help people get money. They help you fundraise and/or they have funds. Um, so I thought I would look into that a little bit more. I also know that Lori Wadsworth, um, at the Historians has a group of historical groups or whatever that she is aware of that she can give me some info on. So I think if we reach out to see what we can get that way for this, I mean, clearly there's just isn't enough money in the capital reserve fund.
Yeah, I, I think it's something we should get started on and, and let the community know that.
Yeah, what about doing a warrant article or something?
Yeah, we, we should.
Well, but I, I think there, there are probably private, private, um, resources that will help
Right.
um, with it because it is a historical bridge and, I mean, I, I was there with Scotty and, I mean, they, when they did it last time, they just had a bunch of carpenters in there. They didn't have bridge builders.
Well, so one thing though, uh, it seems to me is that it is very, I, I'm fully in favor of doing whatever we need to, to get that bridge in good shape. But we ought to make sure we have the right number.
Yes.
Because if this came in at seven hundred grand and once we really dig into it, it turns out it's gonna be a million two, people don't get upset because of the number. They get upset because the number isn't what they expected it was.
Well, I think you need to.
And so we ought to get, we ought to set expectations appropriately. We ought to make sure we're confident that that number is right. Is there a way we can drill down on that or we, we could get?
We need to inform.
It's not quite as complicated. You know, it's not like where they're doing the East Severn Bridge where they have a lot of steelwork and concrete work and all that. The deck right now is perfectly safe. The danger is the top of the pond into the river. Because it's not structurally, there's a whole bunch of X supports that are in the, in the base and all that. So we can ask him for a firmer quote than what he'd be willing to do for not.
Do you like, do you like this guy? Is he structurally?
I think he's, I mean, he does it.
I'm shaking my head now.
You don't like him?
I don't, no, I, no, I think he's a great guy. No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is you don't ask just one person.
Well, you can ask multiple people.
You need to put it out there and have people who do this for a living give us a real bid.
Yeah, well.
And the thing also is, i- if it's gonna be two years from now, they need to factor in cost of materials, which are probably gonna continue to skyrocket the way they have in the last few years. So we don't know. But that would be an instance where you think, okay, now the new quote is nine fifty and two years from now, it's a million and a half.
What I'm saying is I don't think we can afford to wait too long.
Well, we were.
Or we'll have a pile of stuff in the river.
Well, but if we wanted to start this as quickly as we could, it's not gonna be till next year, right?
Oh, yeah, probably.
Right.
Yeah, you've gotta go.
But we can do all that stuff. We can put it out for quotes bids. We can do it correctly and get a real number.
And bring that as next year. Yeah, that's a project.
Well, you have money. Uh, wait a minute, let me just look at this. I can't remember if the bridge, um, is one that you can, yes, the select board can authorize funds. So without going to town meeting, you can authorize some money to have an RFP written.
To study.
Do a little study on it and put it out to bid so that you have the number that you need.
A real, a real number.
A real number. Right?
All right. How much do we need to authorize for that?
I don't know. I would have to kind of find out from, from somebody.
So my sense of what everybody's saying is we should begin, we should look into writing up an RFP that's gonna cover the work that needs to be done and spend the money we need to get that done and then send it out and look to place this on next year's town meeting warrant.
I, I, I support that.
Okay.
And I think, you know, you know, we need to have an engineer help or at least him.
The state engineer will be there.
Help write up. The state engineer will help. So.
Well, he was there at the meeting we had.
Yep.
And, um, I, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we believe, so that sort of solves the question of perhaps next year's big project.
So maybe by, um, your September fifth meeting, I can have a figure of, you know, whether it's twelve thousand or twenty thousand or whatever you need to do all that.
I don't know if there's any traffic impact on River Road as a result of the Thetford Bridge closing. But that would, that would be another, another thing to think about would be maybe we don't want that covered bridge closed at the same time that the Thetford Bridge is closed. So maybe we want to try to time it. Every time I go from Hanover, I see them.
I don't think that should be a consideration. They have an alternate route of going up Route ten.
Yes, they do.
And actually.
And we really don't want them on River Road.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we might like to have that additional traffic going over the bridge can be contributing more than if it's the.
There's a load limit on that bridge. It's pretty light. Your, your truck probably wouldn't be allowed.
A regular, I was gonna say.
Really?
Yeah, a regular truck with a trailer on it, a way over, over.
Well, I'm just at a fifteen hundred. It's not, it's just a halftime pickup truck.
Well, you know, you might have somebody.
Halftime might be, well, it's the weight, but three-quarter ton pickup is too heavy.
Somebody might come look at it and say, close it.
Not that they don't go across them all.
We talked about closing it.
We thought about trying to put some excluders on there.
Yes, we talked about that too.
I just said to Judy, you know, you might have somebody, an engineer might come look at it and tell you, you should close it. You don't know.
Well, I think we need to address it and figure it out as quickly as possible.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. So the fifth, I'll have info, I hope.
Dina's gonna be busy.
Yeah, but I can give Jordan all these other things too. Be good.
Why did I think? Well, I thought there was one more thing that that brought to mind. Oh, and we're gonna work on a warrant article.
I have another meeting. Me too.
Yes, that will come.
Are you gonna, I've got another meeting.
I have samples and then the attorney will approve it, so.
Okay, so bye, Michael.
Bye. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I believe it's the witching hour. We need to, um, go into non-public session.
Okay.
David I.
I know.
Well, you're going under A.
We're going under A personnel and then we may.